I now call the February 1st Board of Commissioners work session to order. The first thing we have on the work session agenda is our audit with Clay Pilgrim and Julie. Y'all want to step forward to do our presentation?
Good afternoon. We are here today to present the audit report for the fiscal year end June 30, 2023 to you. We did our fieldwork, completed most of our onsite procedures, August, September timeframe, probably issued the report early November, and everything was filed ahead of time actually, well before the deadline. And we're here today just to give you a quick summary of that report. And she's got our PowerPoint up on the screen, but I just want to bring to your attention what you've got copies of as well. This is the actual annual financial report, so it's a pretty, pretty thick document of financial statements, and we'll just touch on the highlights there. And then you've got two letters that we've issued as well. So moving on to the slide there, we're going to look at pages one through three of the auditor's report. And a few things I just wanted to point out, we did issue an unmodified opinion on the county's annual financial report for June 30, 2023. You've probably also heard that called a clean opinion. That means we didn't have to make any modifications to the standard auditor's report, which is what you would want to hear as Board of Commissioners. So that means that in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respect, the financial position of the county at June 30, 2023, and the respective changes in its financial position and cash flows. A couple other key points in the actual report that I wanted to point out is that the auditing standards that we follow in performing our audit are those in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, and also government auditing standards, which are issued by the Controller General of the United States. Couple other key points in the report is, you know, what are management's responsibilities and what are the auditor responsibilities? So as you'll see at the bottom of page one, management is actually responsible for the financial statements, and our responsibility as the county's independent auditors is to express opinions on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented. We'll start out with the government-wide statements. Those are on pages 12 through 14. This is not what you typically see on a month-to-month basis as you're looking at your fund level numbers and activity. Pointing out a few things, these numbers are on the full accrual basis of accounting. They are the county as a whole, and we've presented them here in three different columns. We've got the governmental activities, business type activities, and the component units. So your governmental activities are going to be your governmental fund types, adjusted, of course, for full accrual accounting and combined. That's going to include like your, your general fund, your E911, your SPOSS funds, and your business-type activities are your solid waste fund. And then the county does have four component units that are included here as well. We first have the statement of net position, and this statement shows out the county's assets, the county's liabilities, and then the residual net position of the county. And on page 14, we have a statement of activities, and that's going to be, as a whole, on full accrual accounting, the county's revenues and expenses. Now, a couple of key things to point out in these statements are that they are on full accrual accounting, so some examples of what is different from what you see in your governmental fund types. Here, we're recognizing debt balances at June 30, whereas in your governmental fund types, we are actually recognizing the debt payments made during the year or the proceeds of debt received during the year. Similarly, net pension liability or asset is another example. Here, we're recognizing that liability based on the actuarial report, and at the general fund level and the solid waste, we are looking at what you paid out during the year, like what contributions you made to the plan. And similarly with capital assets, if you're looking at your general fund or your SPOSS fund on a month-to-month basis, you see capital outlays where you've actually spent X dollars on a piece of equipment, and here we're recognizing that equipment as an asset and depreciating it over time. So those are some of the key differences when you're looking at these government-wide statements. Everything is as a whole, and it's on full accrual accounting. We wanted to look at the net position over the last five fiscal years. Now, again, this is the county as a whole, so this is the governmental and business-type activities combined, and you'll see on this slide and at the bottom of page 13 that the county ended at June 30, 23 with a total net position of 209 million. That is an increase over the prior year, but what I wanted to point out is for the last five years, that's an increase in net position each year, which is a very positive sign, a very positive trend to see, in that each year, the county's revenues have been over their expenditures and allowed that net position to increase. There are a few different components of net position. One is the net investment in capital assets. You'll see on page 13, that's a very large percentage of the total. That's the balances of the county's capital assets, equipment, vehicles, buildings, roads, bridges, net of the depreciation to date on those assets, and also net of any debt, notes payable, bonds payable, that are relative to those assets. Your restricted net position is primarily going to come from some of your restricted fund balances, such as your SPOSS, your E911, your confiscated assets funds, and then we've got your unrestricted net position, which ended the year with a total of $48 million, which again is an increase over the prior year, and that is not restricted in any manner for spending, and it's also not invested in capital assets, so it is in a form that the county can use. Moving on to the general fund, I wanted to spend some time on the general fund because that obviously is the county's main operating fund and what you're typically looking at on a month-to-month basis as you're looking at the county's activities. And when we're looking at the general fund, we've got this chart of revenues and expenditures over the last five years, and again, we see this positive trend that for the last five years, the general fund revenues have exceeded its expenditures. So that has definitely contributed to that net position increase we seen a couple of slides ago. Granted, that is all funds combined, the general fund definitely has had a healthy five years as this slide shows. And then we also wanted to include a slide about the general fund fund balance. As I said, you know, the, it has increased each year, and here you can see the unassigned and the total, again, over the last five years, an increase each year because revenues in the general fund have exceeded expenditures, and it increased $6 million over the prior year, and I think we've got a note on that, that that was over six months of unassigned fund balance. I don't have...
6.89.
6.89, thank you. So what that means is as of June 30th, if revenues just stopped coming in and your expenditure stayed at a level amount for 2023, that means there's enough money in the unassigned fund balance that the county could operate for approximately 6.89 months, which is a very positive place to be. If you think about timing, that's measured at June 30th. You know, you could easily make it to, say, January. If you look at the larger revenues that are going to be coming in in that timeframe, you know, if, if other revenues stopped, you'd make it the 6.89, but let's say you use some of that, then you've got your insurance premium tax, which would come in in October, and then you've got your property taxes, which would start coming in October, November, December. And a lot of people, when comparing fund balance and the healthiness of fund balance, look at that property tax calendar to see, well, how long are we going to make it until property tax come in, and you're well, well beyond that date. And another thing that I like to talk about with the board is, you know, what types of revenues do you have in your general fund? Obviously, like most governments, a lot of the revenues coming from property taxes and local option sales tax, those definitely are the largest two, that's typical of a local government. And then I mentioned the insurance premium tax, that and charges for services come in third and fourth. But I think what's important about the pie chart of revenues is the variety. You aren't just relying on one source. You can tell by the different colors, there are multiple sources of revenues coming into the county's general fund. And we have a pie chart of expenditures by function. If you look at the big blue spots, that's public safety at 55%. Again, very common that a local government is going to spend about half of its general fund expenditures for the year for public safety. I mean, you've got a sheriff department, you've got a fire department, you've got E911, so those do add up to a substantial amount of the services that you're offering to your taxpayers. Judicial and general government and public works coming in as number two, three, and four, as far as department size and expenditures there. So since we do, as I mentioned earlier, perform the audit in accordance with government auditing standards, we do issue an additional report that's on page six, well, I'm sorry, 106 and 107, and this report shows our consideration of the county's internal controls and test of compliance. So we don't actually provide an opinion... So we don't actually provide an opinion here, but we do, in planning and performing the audit for the county, consider internal controls. And this report describes that and also references a schedule of findings where we will have, if anything, come to our attention. And then also, this year, the county did, as it has in years past, have a single audit. That means that the federal awards expended by the county exceeded $750,000, so that required there to also be a single audit. So starting on page 108, we've got the report on compliance and internal control for each major program. No findings to report there specific to the federal awards. Wanted to mention on 115, the county did have one finding relative to the financial statement audit, relative to just a lack of separation of duties in certain departments and offices, especially the constitutional offices. You know, that is a finding that definitely does present a risk, but is very common with governments, especially counties that have component units and constitutional offices. And some departments, just being smaller, don't have enough people to optimally segregate So we wanted to also discuss some of the current reporting changes. GASB stays pretty busy, as some of you probably know. So this year, the county was required to implement GASB number 96, which is about subscription-based IT arrangements. I don't remember how many Alicia's team and our team actually looked at, but 70? It was a substantial number, but in summary, you know, that standard defines what a Sabita is and may require a commitment, basically, to be recorded, a liability for that subscription arrangement. The county did not have any that were to be recorded, though, so there's actually no impact on your report as a result of that standard. There was a lot of assessment by both the county staff and our staff in looking through those agreements and seeing if they met the standard or not. Then coming up, we've got, actually, I guess for June 2024 will be maybe the first year in a few, that we haven't had a new GASB standard that we thought was going to be substantial. So we don't have anything for FY '24, but coming up for FY '25, we do have a new GASB 101 on compensated absences. So just, you know, the way that that is now is that compensated absences are going to be any absences that you would pay your employees if they departed service. So right now, that would be their vacation time. So there is a liability recorded for that currently, and there's a note disclosure recorded for that currently. And there are some changes coming up to provide some consistency between governments in that reporting. Any questions? Anything that we want to go over in more detail? I know I went through the presentation fairly quickly. Definitely, we can look at anything you would like to in more detail.
Ms. George, thank you for the presentation. It looks really good. One question that I have consistently asked you through the years is when we look at fund balance, we're not a, government is obviously not a for-profit institution, so the higher fund balance you can have in the private sector is great. And so while we want to have a healthy fund balance, we also don't want to have too much, if you will, and we don't want to have too little. So when I've asked you these questions before, you have given the opinion that it all depends on revenues, the timing of revenues. Every county is different when you may have big expenditures. So one county could have three months in reserve and one could have 12, and that doesn't mean that one is necessarily right or wrong over the other. So looking at where we're at, and this is a question that I get asked by constituents, while they would certainly much rather us have money in the bank and not have anything, they also ask the question, well, when is too much to have? I've never been one of those that believes, so far from what I have seen from my tenure on the board, that we have too much in fund balance. But in trying to give reassurances to the community, and this is not for you, I understand, to make a management decision, but when you're looking at standards or you're looking at parameters of a scale of too little and too much, do you believe that we are still falling in an acceptable range of what that fund balance looks like from an audit standpoint?
I do. The county, in my opinion, is not at a level yet to consider returning any, if that's your question, or reducing tax for the purpose of fund balance. I think six months is a good goal. You know, as far as, at what level do you consider that? I have governments with over 12 months that are still not considering that yet because they have so many capital outlay projects that they need to spend money on that they just can't get to. So again, it depends. You know, if you're looking at a December 31 year end, they're not going to need quite as much fund balance on hand. Based on the property tax calendar alone, just because they're a December 31 year end, they're going to have a lot on hand, most likely, if they have a December property tax deadline. So we do look at timing, we do look at the year end. You know, how volatile are the revenues and expenditures? What is the condition of the county's capital? You know, what is the need there? You know, and I think that's an important assessment because those are big dollar items. Debt, you know, how much debt the government has? I mean, obviously, if you've got fixed debt payments, you're going to want to have more in fund balance because if those revenues don't come in, debt's still got to be paid. I mean, if you think about, you know, your personal life, you know, when you've got a mortgage to pay, you need more savings in the bank in the event of something unexpected. So I kind of think of it as along the lines of that. You know, what do we require to go out and what are we comfortable having and keeping in fund balance for those reasons? But do you have another comment, Clay, on that number?
I recommend minimum, I think it's two to three or three to four months, minimum, unrestricted. Now, this is unassigned, we're looking at, those are typically real similar. I was looking just when you asked the question. Y'all do have a little bit assigned of assigned fund balance and a little bit committed. But those committed funds are set aside for, I would call it, health insurance.
Workers' compensation.
Workers' compensation, yeah. So those, that's why we always look at unassigned fund balance rather than unrestricted fund balance. But your unassigned fund balance being at six months, like I say, they recommend, I think it's three to four months, minimum. I'd say healthy, but not too healthy as you...
Yeah, and I understand the question. I mean, I've, you know, I have a client that I would, if they asked me that question, I'd probably say they have way too much. But they're the ones right now that are assessing their capital assets and infrastructure to determine what needs are there, what's it going to cost, and then they'll make those decisions, like what you're asking, you know, at what point is it too much? So I think there's a lot of considerations there. I don't think you're at that point yet, no. I think six months is a healthy place to be. Even though that minimum is two to three months, I'd rather be at six, if it were me.
Thank you for the detailed response.
I got one question. In reference to that pie chart showing the expenditures, in compared to counties our size, do we spend kind of in the same percentage on different departments as counties do, other counties?
Let me see if she can go back for us, so we can look at... Expenditures. He's asking if we think they spend comparable to counties of their size. I would say percentage-wise, yes. Most always, I see public safety at about 50%. Would you agree with that?
I agree. I presented one yesterday. It was a larger county, and it was at 48, I think. They're always in that 48 or 58.
Yeah, Clay, sorry, we need you to be at the mic.
Yes, sir. We, I presented one yesterday, it was a larger county, it was actually a unified government, and it was around 48 as far as public safety is concerned. And then those next three following, that general government, judicial, and public works are always similar, and usually two, three, four in that order. They may fluctuate from year to year sometimes, really, but for the most part, it's usually two, three, four, and you've got, public safety's going to be around half typically always. Whether it be smaller or larger, really. I mean, even, definitely with governments this size, but even the larger ones, we see similar.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? I do want to just take a moment to thank the Board of Commissioners for engaging us to perform the audit, and I want to say thank you to Commissioner Morgan, Alicia Cersey, and their team. It's always a pleasure to work with the team at the county. Employees are always attentive to our needs, and we work all over the county, so you may find me at the sheriff's office one day and Clay at the tax commissioner. We're not always just in the finance department, so I wouldn't be able to name everyone, but I just want to say that we do appreciate the hard work that Alicia and her team, as well as some other people that we work with on the audit, put in in preparation for us and while we're on site as well.
For sure. Yeah, we bother Alicia, Alicia and her team the most, but we do, I mean, we visit with folks, we interview, talk with folks at all departments, at all levels, too. And we enjoy that. That's, it's sometimes good not to talk numbers all the time, but so we do appreciate it, for sure.
Okay, as always, we're available if you need us. If you dig into this in a little more detail and have a question, please definitely reach out. We'd be glad to discuss it with you. Thank you both. Well, now move into the second item is our financial recap, and I'll call Alicia Cersey, the Finance Director, to go over our November, December financials.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. We have the December financials before you today. This is really a good time for us to pause and take a check on where we are. We're halfway through the year, so this gives us a good opportunity to see where we are and kind of look and see maybe where we're headed. I looked at our revenue halfway through the year and backed out any annual payments or anything and tried to see where we're trending. And I believe that we're trending in a way that we will exceed our forecasted revenue for this year. So again, we're having a good collection year on our sales tax. TVAT is tracking very well. The real estate type things like intangible tax, real estate transfer tax, and our building permits are tracking a little behind where we had projected. But we've got other things that are moving ahead of where we projected. So at the end of the day, I think we're going to end up with excess revenue over where we budgeted. Our expenditures are coming in really well. We're running behind budget just slightly. We're at about 48%, and most all of the departments are doing well as far as watching over their expenditures and trying to stay within what we gave them to operate with. On our SPOST, well, I didn't bring my SPOST reports, I'm sorry. I got in the middle of something and got distracted, and I didn't bring them. So you have the 21 SPOST and the 15 SPOST reports, and so if you have any questions on what we've spent as far as SPOST is concerned, I'll be glad to fill those later via phone or email, either one.
Thank you. Okay, Linda, I think we've got new software, correct? Because all of that, I'm going, I can't, I'm pushing so many buttons, I don't know about the rest of y'all, but, so, there, we needed a class like they got a class, right? So that was it for the agenda today. So we're going to move into the, that was it for the work session, we're going to move into the agenda for Tuesday night. So the first thing, of course, we have zoning we won't discuss today, and then under the business session, 10-1, 10-2, and 10-3, those were all the RFPs for the IT, the security, and the ARPA technology, audiovisual. Those, Theron will present on Tuesday night to each of you, well, not to each of you, to all of us. So we'll move past into 10.4. So I'll bring Chief Barnwell up to talk about the equipment for the new fire trucks that are coming.
Good afternoon, Commissioner and Commissioners. Come to, to ask about equipment that we're purchasing for the fire trucks that we bought in 2022, or ordered in 2022. We ordered four engines called pumpers, and we ordered two ladder trucks or aerials. It is, they're going to start showing up. The first ladder will show up to our vendor, Williams Fire in Alabama, next month, as long as the final inspection goes well, and then it should hit our doors a month or a little bit, six weeks after that. So we were wanting to start ordering equipment for all these apparatus that are coming in. A few months later, Ladder 9 will come in, and then sometime during the summer, we have three pumpers coming in. And then, in probably the first quarter of next year, we'll have the fourth pumper roll in. So what we're looking is, we're going to start ordering equipment for these things, and that's what we're looking at. So the past few months, we've distributed some RFPs to potential vendors, and you have before you the ladder there. I won't read it word for word, but it's an extensive list, if you look at the spreadsheet before you as well. It's a very extensive list for the equipment going on the fire trucks. And all of this would include anything from fire hoses and nozzles, to hand tools, to ratchets, to screwdrivers, rescue equipment, saws, all that good stuff. We spent a good bit of time going into this equipment list, and when we sent the RFP out, we got four vendors to send back. All of them met the criteria we asked for on different types of equipment. Not all of them could provide all the equipment, so that's why all four of them, and then some local vendors. We went local as well with some small tools and saws and things like that. And we would like to, you know, keep it local as well. But the vendors that we chose are vendors that we've done business with for quite some time, and we do have established relationships with them. So there's one part of this that probably needs some explaining, the extrication equipment or what's commonly known as the jaws of life. So that is something that we don't have a hard bid on. Everything else is hard bid, but the extrication equipment, after talking to the vendors and seeing where we're at, we want to put our hands on this equipment because it is such a high-dollar piece of equipment. And these jaws of life, you know, because the technology has advanced, and we want to make sure that we put our hands on it. We've got our first vendor coming in next Friday, and then we've got another one scheduled shortly after that. And what we did was we estimated a high dollar on that. We went high on that estimation, about $35,000 per unit, per truck. And so that's where that $210,000 is, and that's what's included in the final price. So the total funds requested for this to include everything that you see on a fire truck is $803,457.01, and that includes that $210,000 estimate. We don't, we will not go over that $210, because there's some different things that we can do to combination of the tools that we can put on different trucks and make sure that we stay below that. So I kindly request the Board of Commissioners approval for the allocated funds from SPOST to facilitate the timely acquisition of essential equipment for your fire department. This investment is vital for the safety and effectiveness of firefighters, and we're confident that the chosen vendors will deliver the highest quality of equipment to us. So any questions?
Is all this compatible with what you have?
Yes, sir, yes. And that's, and if you look, like, there's one vendor, the gas meters, you'll see that that price is a little bit higher than another vendor, but because we have an established relationship with them, they supply our testing gases and things like that, and we have that relationship with them. So everything that we do, and that's why it took so long to put this list together and make sure that we're piecing everything together the right way. And another thing that we did was looked at equipment that our surrounding departments have, especially on I-20 with some of the rescue equipment, make sure that all of that's compatible, so that if they're using theirs, we've got ours there, too, and we can all use the same things.
Right.
Okay.
And Chief, these are, these ladder trucks, are they, they're replacement trucks?
These ladder trucks are going to... These ladder trucks are going to replace Ladder 6 in Bowden and Ladder 9 in Villarica. We left those two. There's some equipment we can pull off of those and put on these ladders that we didn't have to bid out, rope equipment and some other things, but we're leaving some equipment on them so that we would eventually like to staff those trucks to help with, you know, and when we bought them, we'd made that presentation about putting one north of Carrollton and another one south of Carrollton to help ease that burden on Carrollton's Ladder 21 and the money we had to pay them. But yes, those are replacement, the engines, they're pushing other engines down the line. One of the things that we were able to save money on was the SCBA's or the breathing apparatus, the things we wear on our back to go into the fire. The engines, we did not bid air packs for those new engines because those are $8,000 apiece, $32,000 a truck. You're looking at $125,000 roughly of extra money that we didn't. We'll just pull those off of the other engines because, say, we put a new engine at Station 3 in Sand Hill, that engine will go maybe to 14. We can pull the air packs off of 14, put it on 3, 3's go on the new truck. So we're able to move some things around like that.
And I told you I was going to ask this. So when you order these trucks, why don't you order all the equipment when you order the trucks so we don't have to come back and do this?
Right. So the answer to that is there's different ways you can do it. Now, with this, with our situation, we were ordering trucks 22 and 24 and 28 months out. You buy equipment and order equipment, and it hits your warehouse, you're going to sit on it for two years, you're sitting on two years' worth of warranty, and you're sitting on two years' worth of lifespan for some of this equipment because NFPA says you can only keep this equipment so long. Okay? So we didn't want to waste that. We wanted to get, and trends, you know, equipment gets updated. So you don't want to get something two years old and throw it on there and it already be out of date, which could happen. So that's the reason that we waited until we got close to the trucks getting here. Now, there's another way you can do it. You could say, okay, vendor, go ahead and price out all the equipment with the truck. But you're going to pay extra for that equipment because they're going to, you know, the vendor's going to charge them, and then they're going to charge us. So for us to take the time and spend our time doing it and making sure we get the direct price. So we save money that way, too.
I don't know about the other Commissioners, but I had rather you get the air packs that you need with this one-time deal than to have to come back in three months or six months and bring something else.
So the air packs, in two years, we're going to start rotating that thing because the lifespan is going to hit. In five years, seven years, something like that, in two years, we're going to start looking at replacing all of our air packs. We have 150 air packs roughly in the county. So we want to start replacing them incrementally. We don't want to replace them all at once. Now, that is 16 air packs. We could get a jump on if you guys want to do that. That's fine. But we were just trying to save that $125,000. But if we want to go that route, we certainly can and start incrementally replacing our air packs.
Well, I just don't want in six months to come back and have to approve air packs. That's just me.
I was going to ask a related and broader question, that while we're ordering in addition to air packs, I mean, not that we just want to spend money here, but to get a lower cost per unit possibly, a better bargain, if you will, are there other things that we should order that your other trucks would need?
The air packs are going to be pretty much that set price because that vendor is also who we've dealt with forever. They're the only vendor in our area for Scott air packs. So that price is set. Everything else, they gave us their best prices, all the hard bids that we have. And air packs being the only thing that we really did, we left out because we can move them down the line. You know, if we want to go that route, all we got to do is add 16 air packs to the bid, put the hard numbers together, and I'll get them to you, and that way you know what they are.
And we don't get a lower cost per unit if we order that?
That is the lowest cost, that price per unit. If we look at it on the spreadsheet, we can look real quick and make a decision. Trying to find which page it's on. Page four, I believe. Yeah, page four. You see SCBA, Scott X3 Pro with the spare cylinders. We put those two numbers together, order 16 more of those, we're good to go.
So Chief, the comment I have, thank you for taking my call earlier today.
Yes, sir.
I do want to say I really like the spreadsheet that you presented because it's easy for me to glance at and look at and follow on. It's been highlighted, so I really like that. My suggestion is just talking about a few different things. It's not going to delay anything for us not to put it on consent and still vote out on it Tuesday. Maybe we should just talk amongst ourselves, talk back and forth with the chief, and then I would like a little more time to look through the sheets. There's nothing here that I have a problem with, but I do want a little more time to look at this. But we might could come up with something before we actually vote, and there's going to be no delay anyways, whether we put it on consent or not, if the chairman's amenable to that and the Commissioners. But I did want to comment that I really like the spreadsheet.
So we have time between now and Tuesday to look at these air packs and really decide because they're, again, we don't want them so early that the warranty, if they wear out. But if you have time to look at a graduated schedule of how you really want to do it so we can address the fact that if we want to order maybe eight instead of 16, but if we could have probably more concrete on just that item, I think we all would like to know more on that one.
Sure.
For Tuesday.
We don't want to go back to what I was asking about, these things sitting in a warehouse somewhere.
Right, right.
So I don't mind waiting till Tuesday to put this on, not put it on consent agenda.
So two things. One, in reading the form, it said consideration persons, six new apparatus and equipment. We got to take the apparatus off of that because we've already ordered those apparatus. And to be clear, you want us to give you a graduated scale of how we want to replace air packs?
Yes, so we could decide do we want to start replacing them with this bid, or do we want to wait six months or wait a year? Let's see how that pans out.
And what is the warranty on the air packs now? Do we know?
I'd have to ask the salesman. Yeah, we were doing a lot of numbers. We can get with the salesman. It's a standard industry warranty. It is lifetime.
Okay. Okay.
Great.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Chief.
Next, we have 10.5, the expansion of McIntosh Reserve. I'll call the county attorney, Stacy Blackman.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is an opportunity to buy 466 acres on the east side of McIntosh Reserve Park to expand the park for the citizens of Carroll County. It's an opportunity to partner with Trust for Public Land again, and they have an anonymous donor who's willing to fund the purchase price above $2 million. So the county would fund $2 million for the 466 acres. And the resolution authorizes the purchase and the chairman to take all actions necessary for the closing. So if you approve it, we are hoping to close the end of March or 1st of April. And this has .9 miles on riverfrontage on the Chattahoochee.
Thank you, Stacy, for working with TPL. This has been a long time coming. We got the 429 acres downstream, and with this 466 upstream, I believe my calculations are correct, but a total of 800 or 900 acres added. And with TPL's involvement and the private donor, thanks immensely there, we're paying as a county funds about 39 cents on the dollar for that acquisition. So I don't think we could get a better bargain. And my thanks to TPL. They've been just great to work with and taken every opportunity to work with us and as well as the friends of McIntosh Reserve who've been there. While I'm thanking folks, I would also like to thank Representative Lynn Smith. She was very instrumental, a state representative for the GOCA fund grant that we got for the 429 acres, and has just been ready at the drop of a hat to help us, and I appreciate that very much. Her along with Matt Brass and then Mike Dugan as well. And we couldn't ask for better coordination and participation there, so.
Are y'all good with putting this on a consent agenda?
Good.
Okay, great. Stacy, just stay right there because the next thing is 10.6, the lease of the Green Medal Building at 997 Newton Road to the Carroll County Board of Education for the purpose of a joint construction project with a joint construction pathway. Montreal helped me with the new education terms, but, okay, good.
That's right.
This will be our third one because we have the jailers program, the certification with Carroll County Schools, and we have the firefighter one, and now we're hoping to do a construction one.
That's right. So this, the school board asked to lease the Green Medal Building at the back of 997 Newton Road, the old welding building West Georgia Tech used, and for that construction pathway program to partner with the county. And the Georgia Code requires that we hold a hearing first before we lease or sell property to the school board. And so that hearing was held this morning. No one from the public showed up. The chairman was there and Commissioner Fuller were there, but there were no members of the public present. So, but we put notice out for that. So next, you, the code says you all discuss this lease, and then if you approve it, then we have a resolution for your consideration for next Tuesday to adopt, along with a lease that I've discussed with the school's attorney. And the last page of that lease has the drawing of the property and the outline that's proposed. So if you see that, and there is potential for a drive to connect to their campus on the backside of it.
I'd like to say that I appreciate, as Chairman Moore mentioned, the partnership with Carroll County Schools. We're really taking a partnership on things that matter. We need physical bodies out in the world today working, and these are all things that are physically needed. Not that all degrees and all fields of study are not important, but I think we're really making some progress, and I really appreciate the partnership. I did read over the lease contract. Overall, it looked very good. I did already speak with Ms. Blackman about one area that I did have a question about, but whether it changed or not, it would be no substantive change to the contract. So if it's the will, chairman of the board to put it on consent, I would have no problem with that because I know Ms. Blackman will get my question answered, and I'm going to be fine out of the way. But I just did have a small question in the lease, but overall, it looked good.
Just one quick question. From a liability standpoint, during the term of the lease, you're comfortable with that and the limitation or elimination of our liability?
Right. There, it's, the lease says it's as-is. They repair it, they maintain it, they pay the utilities. There is an indemnity clause where they indentify us. Now, if we're also out there with our public works department, we'd have responsibility for that, but they do have an indemnity in the lease. They agreed to that. And they have, they're carrying insurance, too, as well, and will be an additional insured. So yes.
Okay.
And we have been doing, I think, 1 million occurrence and 2 million aggregate on a lot of different policies, and this is actually 3 million aggregate. So it's a little bit above even what we've had on some other standard contracts. So that looked good, too.
That's true.
Okay, so we're good with consent? Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next thing is a Carroll County Development Authority appointment from District 5. Commissioner Reynolds, are you ready to announce? Do you want to wait till Tuesday?
I'm ready to announce. So I don't have Hugh Bass's bio in front of me, but I'm going to nominate Hugh Bass to fill that position. I think he's well-known. We know who he is. Been in the community a long time. I've known him since probably 1980 or so. And I just felt he would be a great addition on the economic development side for my district.
Great, thank you. Now, we'll just put this on consent. Okay, and then Commissioner McLendon, do you have an appointment ready for today, too, for the water authority?
Yes, I'm going to nominate Regina Cleveland. We all know who she is. She had a long, wonderful career with the Sheriff's Department, done a lot of good things there. So again, has consented to step up and serve our community once more.
Else on our agenda for the work session? So to go recap over it, we will have 10-1, 10-2, 10-3, 10-4. Those will be on the agenda for Tuesday night. The consent agenda vote will then be 10-5, 10-6, 10-7, and 10-8. Okay, there's no further questions. We will adjourn the meeting.